Good evening and welcome to our April 16th, 2025 Board of Douglas County Commissioners 530 Business Meeting. Paper copies of the agenda are available for those here in person and the full packet is available on our website. Reviewing our agenda, first, we have two proclamations. Commissioner Reed is going to do one and I'm going to do one and then we'll jump to our consent agenda. There are four items on that agenda. After our consent agenda, we'll have general public comment. We welcome general public comment for addressing issues not on today's agenda but otherwise related to county business. Given our limited time and the need to have orderly and efficient meetings, we apply certain rules regarding public comments. We'll do our best to enforce these rules consistently and without regard to the point of view expressed by the speaker. Here are the rules. One, each speaker will be limited to a total of three minutes of speaking time, however we will accept public comment of any length in writing. Two, individual speakers may not donate unused time to other speakers. Three, all comments must be addressing topics within the jurisdiction of the county commission. And four, we reserve the right to mute or remove any speaker whose comments are threatening, aggressively hostile, or belligerent. Campaigning for public office during the public comment period is not allowed. Please give your full name and address for our meeting minutes and address your comments to the commission. Please also know that the comments received by the commission during our meetings do not necessarily represent the views of Douglas County government, but we value your input. We don't usually respond to general public comments on the spot, but if you'll leave your contact information with county staff, we will try and get specific questions answered. After that, we'll move to our regular agenda. There are five items on the regular agenda this evening. We're going to start with a charter resolution for appointments to the fair board, then we're looking at the natural and cultural heritage grant recommendations, maintenance repairs to the HVAC system at Public Works. Our fourth item is about a healthcare renewal and we'll finish with an update from little government relations regarding the legislature's veto session. For each action item, we'll hear from staff or an applicant, followed by questions from the commission, and then open the item up for public comment relevant to that item. Once public comment is closed, we'll bring the item back to the commission for further discussion and vote. Lastly, a recording of this meeting will be available on the county's YouTube page and website. With that, we'll jump into our proclamations. Our first one is for National Telecommunications Week 2025. Please read that and I think Tony Foster will make some comments when I'm done. All right, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 13 through 19. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require sheriff, police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our deputies, police officers, and firefighters is dependent upon quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Douglas County Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety, and whereas the public safety dispatchers of Douglas County Emergency Communications Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Kansas, hereby proclaim the week of April 13 through the 19th, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and joins in honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our country and citizens safe, adopted this 16th day of April 2025. Hi, Tony.
Good evening. Good evening, commissioners. First, I want to thank you all for proclaiming this week as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. It's a very special week for us. It's a week that we reflect on where we come from, cherish what we have, and look forward to the future. Telecommunicators in the emergency services system are the heartbeat of all emergency response. Without them, it's almost impossible. But they're also the forgotten in many ways. So we cherish this week to be remembered and recognized for all the great work that we do, the countless hours of our time that we work, and the dedication to not just the citizens, but to responders out in the field as well. A day like today with the fires in the county is actually just reminds us just how important our telecommunicators are, along with all the other responders in the field to preserve safe lives and property. Tonight, I tried to keep my comments short because I really want you to hear from a couple of my staff. I think that's very, very important because a lot of times, most people don't ever get to hear or see our staff, so I want to turn it over to them.
Good evening, commissioners and members of our community. My name is Bailey Nattat and I'm here with Jacob Russell. We both work the communications lead position for the Douglas County Emergency Communications Center. Today, I'm honored to be standing here before you today during National Telecommunicators Week, a time dedicated to the unseen heroes behind the scenes. You often see the lights and sirens passing through the county or see the news about the fire department saving a family from a burning building. How do they get there? It starts with a phone call. Our dispatchers are the first first responders by picking up the phone and guiding callers through some of the scariest moments of their life with compassion, composure, and professionalism. Before the sirens even sound, they are hard at work gathering critical information, relaying traffic to other responders, and at times providing lifesaving instructions over the phone. Last year, our agency answered approximately 30,000 calls for emergency, excuse me, 30,000 emergency calls and over 100,000 administrative or non-emergency calls for service. Whether it's a mother who just lost her son, or a grandmother having chest pain, or a parking complaint, the phone is picked up and a call is entered for service.
Our team faces high-pressure situations every day, often without recognition or any closure of the calls that we take, and shift after shift, they continue to show up and with dedication resilience to do what must be done. Our 911 dispatchers are the key source of communication from the public to the help that they need, and this week and every week, we'd like to show our gratitude and appreciation. I'd like to thank the county commission for acknowledging the work we do by honoring us this week, and to my fellow colleagues within the center, you're the calm voices within the chaos, and thank you for continued commitment, strength, and courage to keep our community safe, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate it, and I think Commissioner Dorsey has your proclamation.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to add my personal thank you for all that you do, and I do get to interact with you and your staff, your excellent staff, pretty regularly, and it's your lifesavers, so thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to National County Government Month. Commissioner Reed.
Good evening. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serving more than 330 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities, and whereas counties fulfill a vast range of responsibilities and deliver services that touch nearly every aspect of our residents' lives, and whereas counties as intergovernmental partners enact local, state, and federal programs to address the needs of all residents, and whereas Douglas County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways, and whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the county, across the country, always trips me up, to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. Now, therefore, it be it resolved that the Board of Douglas County Commissioners hereby proclaim April 2025 as National County Government Month and encourage our community to participate in Douglas County Discovery Day on April 29th, which is next Thursday, next Tuesday, April 29th, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Douglas County Fairgrounds, adopted this 16th day of April 2025. And I'll turn it over to Carrie Britt. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I am Carrie Britt, the Media and Communications Coordinator, and in honor of National County Government, I've been collaborating with staff across all departments to highlight the essential services and programs that we provide through Douglas County Discovery Day. It is a rare once-a-year opportunity that brings every department together under one roof to connect with our community. Our inaugural event was last year, and it was a success, and we're thrilled to make this year's event even better with more activities. Douglas County Discovery Day, as you said, is Tuesday, April 29th, from 5:00 to 7:30 at the fairgrounds. Details are posted on our website at DGCOKS.gov, and we are looking forward to celebrating with the community and honoring our dedicated employees who make it all possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. All right. I think Commissioner Dorsey's got your proclamation there, Carrie. All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda. There are four items on our consent agenda. Commissioners, would any of you like to pull any of these items for further discussion? Seeing none, is there anyone in the public who'd like to remove one of these items for further discussion? Anyone online, Sarah? All right, we'll bring it back to the commission for motions.
Commissioner Reed moved to approve 2.1 through 2.4.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, passes 5-0. We'll move on to general public comment. If you'd like to provide general public comment, we welcome you to the podium. As I said earlier, you have three minutes, and there is a sign up there if you'd sign up there, but also share your name with us for the minutes.
John Eames. Lawrence. I'll write my name in a bit. Last week, before the fire department made their city-imposed budget cut, they made it a county problem, which I hope you discuss in a public forum. The fire chiefs discussed their methods of analyzing fire and EMS operations. It was well done. It is similar to our discussion of the homeless program that I've wanted to, and I want to highlight the similarities. The chief's goal is fire suppression and emergency management. They described different types of number of fire events, the fire equipment and staff required to respond to those events, the length of time required to deliver those resources to the location of the event, the time required to mitigate each type of event and obtain the intended outcome. They discussed goals, inputs, outputs, measurable metrics applied to a population of events, and described it all at an enterprise level. Why do this? To track outcomes and based upon metrics, improve those outcomes over time. This is the same process as I've been illustrating for homelessness program. The goal is homeless functional zero, number of homeless less than average capacity. We describe different types and numbers of homeless, what professionals call by name lists, summed by type. We define the different services delivered to address those needs, not just a room, but treatments. Examples, services to address addicted homeless are not the same as those required to address homelessness resulting from assault. We describe the resources and length of time required to deliver those services. We identify treatments and recovery times required to mitigate each type of homeless event and obtain the intended outcome. We have goals, inflows, outflows, and the measurable metrics applied to homeless population and described at an enterprise level. Why do this? To track outcomes and based upon metrics, improve those outcomes over time, tracked monthly, quarterly, and even over years. Given the size of the homeless program, this is the type of data that should be easily available to the public on the county housing and human services website, so progress, success, or failures can be seen by those who pay for the program. Thank you.
The other public commenters? Anyone online, Sarah? Okay, closed public comment and move to our regular agenda. The first item is to consider a charter resolution to revise appointments for the Douglas County Fair Board.
Thanks, commissioners. I'm going to kick this item off. I do want to recognize that we've got the president and the fair board, Justin Anderson here, as well as some other members of the fair team as well. The fair board's been working for the last several years to secure a representative to serve on the fair board from Grant Township, and we really just have not been able to secure anyone to fill that spot. I want to, and I'll let Justin talk a little bit about what they've kind of gone through, but this is a hard-working board. I always say that next to planning commission, fair board is the toughest board in all of county government, and so it is really important that they get a full contingent of members at their meetings to participate because our fair is an all-volunteer fair. So we think this is a good solution. We worked with legal counsel. It is a charter resolution because there are a number of statutes related to how fair boards are set up, and we're actually chartering out of not so much this appointment process, but the timing of the appointments. So that's why it's a charter resolution, and just invite Justin to add anything if he wants to about the fair board and what you guys have all been working on.
I don't have anything in particular to add. You know, we went through for two years now, tried to find a candidate who would come forward, use the Grant Township trustee, tried to run through that method as well, went through, you know, the people within that are active in the 4H and the fair to try and find one, and just haven't had anybody who was willing at this point. So kind of that township ends up not having very much population or whatever at our fair just because so much of it is in the city. So made it hard. We'd like to open it up to be able to get a complete board, mostly to help ease, you know, the load on the rest of them. So you guys have any questions about what we do? Sorry, Sarah.
No, it's fine. I was just going to add, and if we find someone from Grant Township that comes forward in the future, we'd be able to go back and make that appointment. So this is really just if someone is, for any township is not able to secure, we get an at-large member.
Commissioners, any questions for Sarah or Justin?
No, I just want to appreciate Justin bringing this forward. It was emailed to me and we kind of put our heads together and said, I think Sarah and our legal will have to work on that since it would be, you know, outside of state statute. But it is a really hard-working board, and I'm glad for you guys to have whatever help you feel that you need. We have tried hard from up here also to try and find somebody to serve from Grant Township and not had any luck. So put out a final call if anyone from Grant Township is interested in serving on the fair board, we would love to hear from you, but I just appreciate that you brought the process forward and that we're getting through it, so hopefully this meets your needs.
Thank you.
We'll take public comment on this item. Is there anyone who'd like to provide public comment? Anyone online, Sarah?
No.
Okay. Bring him back to the commission for further discussion or motions.
This is Commissioner Reed. I was just echo Commissioner Rolle's appreciation, and hopefully this is what it takes, and maybe y'all have some people in mind that are interested in serving, but just live somewhere else besides Grant Township, so I hope you'll be a complete board soon. And with that, I move to approve Charter Resolution Number 25-4-2 to amend the appointments to the Douglas County Fair Board.
Second.
In second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll move on to the 2025 Natural Cultural Heritage Grant Recommendations, and I think I saw Caitlin.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Caitlin Amerlin, the Heritage Conservation Coordinator for Douglas County, and I am so excited to present to you all tonight the Heritage Conservation Council's recommendations for the 2025 National Cultural Heritage Grant Program. If you're not aware, we work in natural and cultural heritage. I'm joined tonight by several members of the HCC. We've got Tim, Charlie, and Caleb here, and they're part of the seven on the Heritage Conservation Council that met to review the applications that we received. We had a really competitive year for the grant program. We had 26 applications that totaled just over $1 million in requests, which is the second most that the program has ever seen, and that was back in 2014. So we haven't seen that volume since then. So they had a lot to wade through and make some really tough decisions. There was a lot of projects where the, I believe the spread in the scores was around 10, I think it was about 12 specifically, but very, very close, very competitive, and I'm here to answer any questions you have about how we arrived at these recommendations, and I outlined in the memo those recommendations there, so thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Commissioners, any questions for Caitlin? Caitlin, just if you could, there were a large number of grants that did not get funded. Do you have any general comments, nothing specific to the grants, about maybe where those grants felt fell a little short compared to the others?
I think that question's even harder to answer this year than most. I think that, given the volume, that if there was maybe one small thing that maybe pushed it, you know, to be in that less competitive category, generally, the projects that are most successful, and I think that HCC gravitates towards, are the projects that have a strong public impact. So I guess I'd encourage specifically for some of those more site-based, more individual-type projects to continue to reach out to the community, see if there's any partners that they could bring in. I feel like that always helps strengthen projects, but again, I felt like this year, and I think the HCC members can attest, that there are several projects they wish they could have funded if more funding was available.
Caitlin, I'm curious, and I probably could answer this by going back to the application as it has evolved and been updated in this sort of scoring matrix, but can you talk to me about if and where the conversation about fully funding and partially funding comes from? Like, I'm interested both in terms of, and I'd be interested to hear any feedback from any of the members of HCC kind of about that thought process, but specifically curious around what the communication to applicants is about that, and whether or not there's any querying, sorry, about sort of if they weren't fully funded, or, you know, what would the implications of that be? Could it still be a successful project, et cetera?
Yeah, that's a wonderful question. So for this year, the council definitely took the approach of funding more projects at a smaller dollar amount. So in the past, they've tried to fund one major award, so that's above $40,000 in full, but they did not choose to do that this year simply to be able to fund more projects, you know, both in geographic diversity, the type of project, and so that's how we arrived at those this year. And then as far as working with applicants, so after this evening, once we have kind of the okay to proceed, I'll send out formal letters to all the applicants, whether that's funding, partial funding, or declining funding this year. And so that's then on me. I will work directly with the applicants, so we'll amend, we'll have their proposal they submitted, but we'll add an amendment to the grant agreement of what they can achieve with the funding, so they won't be required to do the full project as proposed, but just either pieces of it, or reworking the scope a bit to work for the decreased funding. And that's something I make clear, I meet with all the applicants beforehand, that's one of the requirements to apply, and that's something that I make clear in the process that they have a lot of decision-making power in that process, and so, and if we aren't able to come to a, you know, a place that's mutually beneficial, then they have the choice to decline the funding, and I make it clear there's no penalty for that, so that is something that can happen, and I think we're continuing to figure out what would happen in the circumstance, especially with the larger amounts, if they decline, how we then recycle that back into the program, X, Y, Z.
Thanks. Is there any part of the application on the front end that talks about that or asks them to consider that partial funding sort of prior to this point in the process where you're thinking about those follow-up conversations and contingency planning?
That's, I don't believe it's specifically listed in the application, but that is something I do emphasize in those meetings, so I encourage folks to start thinking about phases or blocking out their projects to prepare for potential partial funding, but that was something I considered in the past, is adding like a checkbox question of, would you be interested in partial funding? And maybe this is the green light I need to add that into the future, and just to confirm, you know, is it an all-or-nothing type of project? Because that's something the council does try to evaluate with the projects, but sometimes it's not always clear.
Thanks.
I know in years past, we've had a pretty amazingly well-spread-out geographically set of projects that we've funded and approved, and this year is a little less so, and I know we're kind of at the mercy of what projects come forward and what projects kind of rise to the top, but just kind of as the group looks, you know, in the future, like that's something that I really, I love the map at the end there, but really value being able to spread these resources to all corners of the county when we're able. I know we've funded a lot of rural cemetery cleanup projects, and that's really helped to kind of get our geographic spread, but I think people, you know, across the community really value when it comes to their neighborhood, so just flagging that for future conversations and recognize that we still got, you know, a large one in around Baldwin City, or two in Baldwin City, and one further out west. Thanks.
Yeah, and just to echo, that is something that comes up often in the conversation, and I think how we ended up with the slate that we did, you'll notice that there weren't too many applications, you know, I felt like the representation with the pool given was fairly strong, because we did have a lot of Lawrence-centric-ish projects this year, but yeah.
Thank you, commissioners. Any further questions? Okay, we'll take public comment on this item. Is there anyone here who'd like to provide public comment on this item? Anyone online, Sarah? All right, back to the commission. I want to thank the three members who are here tonight. Thank you for all your work. That was a lot of grants, and I'm sure a lot to pull through, and I'm sure you'd love to fund them all, and those are tough decisions to make. We really appreciate your recommendations on them, so thank you. Thank you for being here.
Can I say how much I enjoy reading about the projects, and there's some phenomenal projects also that didn't get funded, but it's really neat to know what's on the horizon in our community and hope that some of those, you know, continue to stick with it or find other funding and bring those forward. So I always think it's a great read. I appreciate the work that you do, and having to evaluate those is hard, but I think this program has really given people a way to connect with county funding for projects that they care about, and so it's really enjoyable to read through it.
All right, there's no other comments. I'll make a motion to approve the grant award recommendations as submitted by the Heritage Conservation Council for the 2025 Natural and Cultural Heritage Grant Program.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further conversation? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Thank you, Caitlin. All right, we'll go to our next item, which is for maintenance repairs and upgrades to the HVAC system in Building A at the Douglas County Public Works Facility. And we get to see Jimmy twice in one night. Thank you very much. Glad you're here.
Mister, good evening. I'm Jimmy Wilkins, Director of Building Maintenance. I want to give you a little more background on this.
Jimmy, you might need to get closer to that mic. I'm a hard-time parent.
If you need to, just hold the whole thing up.
It's too tall.
That's what I said.
Okay. I'll give you some more background on this. This system is a Dyken VRF system, which stands for Variable Flow Refrigerant, if you don't know what that means. It was installed when the building was built new, of course, and the idea behind it was to be a more efficient system and save energy, which, when it works, it does. When it doesn't work, it just gets real expensive. So as stated in the description, the maintenance department has determined the need to replace this system, and it was identified in the CIP CRP program for the county in 2022. It's been in there ever since, and we've been working to get the plans together to replace it. In the last three to five years, the VRF system has become a maintenance nightmare, to be honest with you. We've spent over $40,000 in the last three years to maintain it. We've spent over $40,000 in the last three years to maintain it, and since the building opened in 2015, we've replaced compressors 13 times. And if you don't know, the compressor is the heart of the system. That's what makes it all work. So recently, we started work with P1 Engineering, asking them to plan and design equipment replacement for, for that building. We want to go with a conventional system like we use across the county everywhere else. So they have completed that work, and with, with that work, what they're, what they're proposing is to replace the two Dyken rooftop units with new Carrier brand systems, and replace some of the ductwork, some of the VAV or heat relay boxes above ceiling, and a new control system that is integrated with the rest of the county, which we haven't been able to do with the VRF system because of the way it operates. So I guess I'm here before you tonight to ask you to authorize the county administrator to enter an agreement with P1 Mechanical through the TIPS Cooperative Purchasing Program to move forward with this contract as proposed.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wilkins?
I have a question. What kind of warranty did this come with? And I'm sure you've had lots of conversations at the company, somewhere around pump 13. How have those conversations gone, and is there any kind of remedy for that?
Well, unfortunately, I wasn't here when the system went in, but what I was told was there was a five-year warranty with it. Now, luckily, what they've done is since they've had to replace the compressor so many times, each compressor then comes with a new two-year warranty. So we've been able to string those along. There have been three of the 13 we had to pay for because they were out of the warranty period, but each one of those replacements is between $13,000 and $18,000, depending on the size of the compressor. So at this point, we have no warranty left on any of the system.
But they've been covering this, you know, $13,000 replacement cost under warranty many of those times?
Many of those times, yes.
Any other questions?
Ask another. So, so this system, before your time, but this system was chosen because of its energy efficiency, kind of forward-thinking, we went partly with that, you know, LEED-certified building. So has the thinking just moved away from that entirely, or other buildings, or other companies making a product like this that's been better?
There are other companies that have a product like this that are better. However, there's also been improvements in conventional systems. And when we started work with P1 Engineering, what they told us is the systems that they're going to present to us, or provide to us if we move forward, are within, you know, a few percentage points of the same efficiencies of what this system was when it was installed 10 years ago. And, because we talked about the LEED Silver, I believe that building was, or that facility was given at the time, and their engineers reassure me that if the equipment we're wanting to put in now was available in 2015, they would have still received that LEED Silver certification.
So talk to me about the changes in the ductwork. Seems pretty invasive.
It is going to be invasive. It's going to be a 100-day project. I've already worked with people at Public Works to plan a way to relocate people within their building. Luckily, as you know, since you've had your commission meetings out there, there's some space, and we've been able to move people around. So we have a plan, a loose plan at this point in place, but I feel like we can accommodate and give everyone a comfortable place to work while the work is being done. It does mean removal of ceilings. It does mean there's going to be times where there's no heating or cooling. And so we're shooting to do this in the fall, starting 1st of September, and completion hopefully by the end of November.
Thank you.
Is the system manufactured in the US or somewhere else?
It's in the US.
Okay, thanks.
I'll just make a short comment. We had very similar systems in a school district building we had, and I think at that time, that was a pretty common recommendation for, for systems, and had many of the same issues that Jimmy is highlighting here. I think it's just a problem with the system all the way around, and, and experienced some replacement at that level as well. So I'm, sometimes we try things, and unfortunately, they don't work as we hoped, and, while it's unfortunate you want HVAC system to last 30 years, this is not the case here. Yeah. Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Does anybody like to make public comment on this item? Anybody online, Sarah? Okay, Commissioners, bring it back up for motions or further conversation.
I know this has been on our radar for a while, and it's been a, a problem for a very long time, and so we have talked about it, and it's in our CIP. It's one of those things that I, you know, it's, nobody wants to pay for this, but this is where we are. So we've got to, got to move forward. And I would make that a motion if anybody wants me to.
Sure.
I move to authorize the county administrator to enter an agreement with P1 Mechanical through the TIPS Purchasing Cooperative for HVAC system upgrades and repairs at Building A at the Douglas County Public Works Facility upon completion of legal review of all contracts.
Second.
Moved in second. And any further conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Jimmy.
Thanks, Jimmy.
All right, we'll move on to item 4.4, which is a 2025 healthcare renewal. Michelle Sprayer is here.
All right, you're going to have to give me a second here. There we go. So used to Teams now. Okay. Well, good evening. I will jump right in. We'll, we'll, we will review the last plan year, the last full plan year, it seems a very, like a very long time ago, from 6/1 of '23 to 5/31 of '24, but the timing doesn't quite work out with budget to be able to, to do a, a full review. So we're a little bit delayed in that. And then we'll talk about year-to-date, year-to-date plan cost, and then recommendations moving forward. And we've got some budget information in here regarding the benefits fund. Brooke's here, she'll, she's, since she manages that fund, so I'll have her speak to a couple of those bullets on there. But to jump right in, our total plan cost for the last full plan year came in about 6.5% under projected. Total plan costs include everything, like all of our claims for medical, dental, prescription. It includes all of our administration, administrative fees, so we pay, we pay fees to access the Cigna network. We pay stop-loss fees, which we'll talk about stop-loss in a minute, and we pay Luminaire Health to process all of our claims. So total plan cost, everything's wrapped up in that. So we did come in for about the, I think the fifth year in a row, we came in a little bit under projected, so, you know, we've been, we've been running really well. I think our, our employees are being very good stewards of, of our healthcare plan. And it's, this is just always a moving target, so it's very, very hard to project and, and know where we're going to be. So medical and prescription trends for the last plan year, our medical claims, they were up around 3% over the, the prior plan year after our stop-loss reimbursements, but we are still really, I mean, we are under national trend by about 5%. Again, I think that's, that's education that Christie does with all of our new hires and during open enrollment. I think it's our hands-on approach, and our employees understand our healthcare plan, and, and we, we just have programs in place to, to save those dollars. Prescription claims were up close to 14% over prior plan year. A lot of this has, and, and that is over the national trend, but a lot of this has to do with our coverage of weight loss medications. So we have those GLP-1s, like the Wegovy's and the Ozempics, and, you know, it's all over the news, you hear about them all the time. Our plan does cover those, but I, I think we've had some really good successes with covering those with our employees. We've, there's, there's quite a few success stories with weight loss, which in turn leads to better health outcomes, you know, blood work, and so, you know, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to gauge a return on investment, but more and more plans are starting to cover those. So, you know, if we, if we didn't cover them now, I think we'd definitely be moving that way. Our stop-loss premiums, I know we have a couple of new Commissioners on here, so I don't want to, I don't want to over-explain if, if you know what, what these terms mean, but our stop-loss is insurance that we actually purchase to cover high-cost claims. So every individual on our plan has an, in a, a stop-loss deductible of $195,000. So once the plan has paid $195,000 in claims on any one person, the stop-loss insurance company picks up and starts paying after that. So our liability for any one person is $195,000. So our premiums were down. We had a very favorable renewal for this 6/1/23 plan year start in stop-loss. So, and, and it's hard to project stop-loss. A lot of times our, our stop-loss quotes are coming, because they want as much claims data as they can get before they quote stop-loss. So a lot of times our quotes are coming in after, after we've done this meeting, so they typically project, you know, a 15% to 20% increase in stop-loss premiums, but it actually came in at about a 12% decrease, which is really unheard of. So that was very positive, which that attributed to a lot of our, you know, coming in under projected. We have Willis Towers Watson, our benefit consultants, help us kind of benchmark our funding rates a little bit, because I, I, we want to know how, you know, out of our total plan cost, how much of our plan is Douglas County paying for, and how much skin in the game, I guess, do our employees have, and how much are they covering? So the breakdown is about 77% of total plan cost are covered by the county, and, and employees and family members are picking up 23% of that cost. So it's a, it's a pretty rich plan. I think this is pretty typical of, you know, government, local government plans, they tend to be a little richer than the, than the private industry. So our, our year-to-date costs, we are still, as of the end of February, we are still under where we projected we'd be this time of year. So we're, we're at about 96.5% of our budgeted accrual, so great news there again. We've had seven, what they consider large claimants. Willis Towers Watson helps us analyze all this data. They consider a large claimant, any, anybody with claims over $97,000, which is about half of what the stop-loss is. We've had two claimants that have exceeded the $195,000 stop-loss deductible. We had five claimants this time last year that had hit stop-loss. So our, our high-cost claimants are really down, which is, again, you know, very good news, especially given that our prescription claims are up so much, you know, those, those, that, that cut in high-cost medical claimants is really kind of making up for the, the higher trending in, in our prescription claims. And our rebates that we get from Med Impact, which used to be MedTrack, and then it was Elixir, and, and now it's Med Impact, our, our rebates are set to double compared to current years. So that's, that's because Med Impact does a really good job of negotiating these benefits with manufacturers, and they pass those, they pass those rebates on to us, so. And, and rebates change all the time because it has to do with the mix of claims. So that, that, that is something that we, we do not hang our hat on, we do not, you know, plan for that when we're doing projections, just because you never know what that's going to be. Our dental experience, it's really, it's kind of a snoozer. It's, you know, there, that plan is running very well, we've had enhancements in place, you know, it, it's running very well, even with enhancements that we've put in over the last couple of years. So again, dental is not a, is not a high-cost, you know, contributor in this plan anyhow, so, but it's a very valued benefit. First Stop Health is a telemedicine that we had, we've had it on, I don't even know how long we've had it, but it's been years. We have one of, First Stop Health has told us over and over again that our population, it is, 60% of our population uses, uses that benefit, which is one of the best in their entire book of business. So again, I think a lot of that is communication, you know, education on this plan. It, it saves the employee money, saves, saves the plan money, so it's, it's a very good benefit. We also did a roadmap for wellness. We contracted with a local wellness provider to, it was kind of, it was a pilot program. We got approval when we were doing this last year, we rolled it out, you know, around July or August last year. We had 25 participants enroll, all of them graduated. We had a total weight loss of around 422 pounds over those five participants. The feedback was overall very, very positive. This provider really is about whole-person wellness. It, the total cost for their program was just over $12,000. We did have a $10,000 wellness grant that we got from Blue Cross Blue Shield, that we, you know, kind of use, use that some seed money for that, so, but with the success, we're, you know, we're hoping that it's something we can, you know, we can keep enhancing our wellness plan with. This is just a quick snapshot, this has been here in the last few years, it just kind of, that, what I really like to look at on this is, you know, the, if you look at the, the budget variance, if, you know, it's near the bottom under the budget accrual, it kind of, it shows you where we've come in at the end of every plan year. So you'd look back to 2017, 2018, those were not good plan years, when we're coming in at four and almost 10% over-budgeted. Sarah has, I think, a little bit of PTSD from that.
Yeah, I think it should be noted that the last plan year I managed was 2018.
So, so we try really hard, you know, the goal is to run a balanced plan, you want your expenses to, to equal your, your revenues, and, and that's what we try for, but we've been lucky enough to, to come in, you know, under budget, so all great things. So our projections for next year, again, Willis Towers Watson, the, the county's benefit consultants, they help us with these projections. Total, total plan expenses are around $10.5 million, and that's for medical and prescription, and then $395,000 for dental are the projected cost. So this would mean we would need a funding increase, and you can get an increase in funding multiple ways. It can be more money from the county, it can be more money from employees, it can be changes in plan design with increased deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums, it can be removing benefits. So there's a whole combination of things you can do to get that, that funding increase. We are still below what market trend is. When we talked to Willis Towers Watson about our projections, and they said this is by far the most positive meeting that they've had out of all of their clients, because a lot of client, they, they've had clients that are looking at an 18% increase, or easily double-digit. So they always like delivering the news to us, and we love hearing it. So again, the GLP-1 cost, they, they really are in the rise, and it is contributing to a lot of, a lot of plan cost for everybody, really, but I think that's, it's the trend. Projected funding increase for dental, again, you can see it's pretty small dollars, it's 3.7%, which is about $14,000. Our, our trend right now with current claims in dental, like I said, it's running very good. I think our costs were up a little bit when we implemented some plan enhancements. Everybody kind of, you know, swarmed to those plan enhancements, and now that's kind of settled back down. So I don't, we won't see that kind of growth. For stop-loss marketing, for that extra insurance, Optum, who is with, that's who we're with now, they presented an 8.5% rate increase. We were very pleased about that, but again, our, our claims are running very well, so... We were very pleased about that. But again, our, our claims are running very well. So they have made some money off of us this year. We are eligible for a refund from them because our claims have ran well, up to $156,000. If we renew with them, we, you know, that's, that's when we would get the refund. We got one other competitive proposal from Symetra, and it was also an 8% increase. But, you know, if we do get the refund from Optum, of course, we're, we're better off just staying with them. And nobody, it's, you know, you got to change reporting structures and, you know, build new reports when you change stop-loss companies. So if you can, if you can stay with, you know, what you've got, it's, it's definitely easier for everybody. Actually, I'm going to have Brooke just speak to the first few bullets there, because she loves to talk numbers and.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, commissioners. This slide represents the funds that are available to pay claims that Michelle's talking about for county employees. You know, on the previous slide, Michelle talked a little about, about funding increase. Staff did build in a 3% increase to funding in 2025 for this plan year upcoming. We, so the fund balance in that fund was 8 million, 8.5 million dollars roughly. 42% of that fund balance coming into the new year can be utilized to pay for claims. With that being said, there's some other areas where we do operate the health insurance claims processing. We have a health insurance trust account. Approximately $5 million is in that trust account, and transfers are made over time through payroll liabilities. So every other Friday when we get paid, we take a certain portion of the employee's paycheck for their premium, and then the county provides additional funding for their portion of the premium. The employee's portion of the premium goes directly into this trust account. However, the county's portion of that premium goes into a deferred liability line. When Christie starts running low, as she's making payments for claims on a weekly basis, once that operating account gets below a certain amount, we wipe out the payroll liability account, and we move that over to our operating account. That occurs anywhere from three to five times per year, depending on the volume of claims that are coming through that account, and how we make those payments. So payroll liabilities at the time were around 1.6 million. And then we also have a cash investment account. So if we really get in a pickle and we need to have additional liquid cash to pay claims, we do have this funding available as well. So, you know, all in all, we have about $13.1 million that the county can use to pay medical claims. Did I cover everything you wanted me to cover?
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Okay, so speaking to this fund a little bit more and, and what has happened over the last several years. You know, plan years beginning 2020 through 2023, we had budgeted, you know, almost a 7%, you know, increase when the average cost have come in at 2.8%. So again, that, that speaks to those years that you saw in that chart where we're just coming in under, under-budgeted or under-projected. We did make plan design changes and increased employee contributions. Can also be called employee, yeah, premiums. Employee contributions have increased around 25% the last couple of years. So plan year beginning 6-1 of '23, and then the current plan year that we're in, we kept everything fat, flat for employees, so no more money out of their paychecks. And then our out-of-pocket costs, so our deductibles and co-insurance, there were some large increases from 2018 to 2023, and I think that was in response to those bad years that we had had. It's scary when you, you know, when, when you're coming in 10% over-budgeted, when you're talking about $10 million, it's, it's a lot of money. So we kind of scurried to, to increase those, you know, those out-of-pocket costs, and it's, but then the last two years, again, we've been able to hold that flat as well. So.
I'd just add that part of the reason why we increased some of the employee contributions, both in premium equivalents and in deductibles and is also just that, previously, our plan was extremely employer-rich in that sense, and to just try to have a balance that is more in line with national trends and, and regional trends in terms of what part of an employee's healthcare is borne by the employee, and what part is borne by the employer. So I feel really confident that we're at the right mix of that now compared to our peers.
So our recommendations with all of this information for the 6-1-25 renewal, because of the healthy fund balance that, that Brooke just talked about, and where the plan is running so far, and, you know, with the last several years of really good claims experience, and continuing to add to that, to that fund balance, we are recommending that we, for one more year, this won't last forever, and we know it, but we're wanting to keep costs flat and not increasing deductibles or out-of-pocket maximums, and not changing the contributions out of employee paychecks. And that would just, you know, if, if things come to fruition, you know, and we really need that 5.7% funding increase, it would just come out of those reserves because we've built that up so much over the years.
And Michelle, if I can chime in there, what I'd also just remind commissioners is 2025, so this current year that we're in is the first year that we did a substantial mill levy reduction out of this fund. So we reduced two mills out of this fund in a two-year plan for a planned spend-down to get this fund back in alignment with best practices around fund balance for health insurance and, and benefit accounts. So we really don't have any results of that yet, so it's too soon to tell, because, you know, we're, it's April. And so I think as we move into budget, and this time next year, we're going to have a really strong picture of our, you know, as our costs go up and we've managed the funding amount, are we hitting the right spot that we can sustain our investment from a tax perspect, tax perspective in this fund? So I think that's also another reason why it's probably wise to not adjust too much in plan design at this point, because we want to see how that comes out. Because we have substantially reduced the amount of money coming into this fund for 2025.
Yeah, and, and, you know, once we, once we get to that sweet spot, so to speak, I, I, I think it's always a good idea to, you know, plan for at least some, some increases, just to avoid those peaks and valleys. Because you don't want to get yourself in a situation where all of a sudden I need it, you know, I need a 15% increase in funding. Because those are hard conversations to have. It's been really nice. Our employees ha, you know, we did the compensation study. We've had some nice market and merits increases as well. So our employees have, our employees have been able to hold on, on to their money a little longer, which has been a really nice message to send out. You know, with the cost of everything right now, it's just, it's been really nice to operate like this. But again, I, we know it won't last forever, and those, those hard years will come, and those tough conversations will follow. The couple of plan design changes, we have a carve-out for our chiropractic care. It's a very small-dollar benefit, but it's a highly valued benefit. We have a workforce that is a lot of manual labor, and, and they really rely on, on that chiropractic benefit. Our reimbursement, you can go to any chiropractor you want, so you don't have to use an in-network one, which, you know, people love that as well. Our reimbursement has been at $25 for, since before I got here. And as everything else, the, the costs are increasing. So we'd like to recommend increasing the reimbursement to $40 a visit, and then increasing the maximum number of visits from 20 to 26. Luminaire and Willis has told us that's really the standard. It's, you know, two visits a month or so. So it's, that, you know, that would be, that would be getting us up to par. And then our health, health reimbursement account, or HRA, seed money, something that came out of the McGrath study, which we'll talk very briefly about in a second. The seed money we put into the health reimbursement account is a little on the low side. So we're recommending a, a small increase from that, in that $250 up to 300 for an individual, and going from 500 to 600 for all every, all other coverage levels. We would like to renew with Optum for our stop-loss, for reasons that we just talked about. Luminaire, it was formerly Trustmark. It was yet a different name when I started here five and a half years ago. So there, there have been a lot of vendor changes in management. But Luminaire came back with a 33% increase, which blew us all the way. Again, not huge dollars, but we're used to 2%, 3%, 4% increases in admin cost. Luminaire just recently purchased Trustmark or merged. I'm, I'm not sure exactly how it went down. So we were a little taken back by that. Willis did a, a great job of negotiating on our behalf and got that down to an 8.8% increase. So we're very thankful for that. But, you know, just, I, it's ti, I think it's time to do an RFP, a full-blown RFP, looking at healthcare vendor, the, the, the whole package.
Yeah, so because Luminaire is our third-party administrator, let's explain what that is. Okay.
Yes, yes. So they are, they process claims for us, but we access a, a Cigna network of doctors. But Luminaire does process all of our claims and make, they make all the payments to the providers. But, but I think it is time, especially with them coming back with a 33% increase, I, I think it's time to kind of hold their feet to the fire a little bit and do that RFP. So we plan to start that work right after renewal. A lot of that work will fall on Willis Towers Watson. They'll, you know, they'll prepare the RFP, send it out. It's all included in, you know, what they, the money that, you know, they make from commissions off of our plan. So we'll, we'll start that, that process right away. So another, this has been, this has been a pretty hot topic. Sarah and I have talked a lot about it, and I, I think she's talked to, to you all about it. First Stop Health, because our employees know what First Stop Health is, it's, it's highly utilized. They do have a, a mental health module within their, within their system. It would provide virtual mental health care. It can be just a phone call. It can be Zoom, Teams, you know, so it can be somewhat in-person. It is licensed therapist. It can be long-term counseling, unlike our EAP or Employee Assistance Program that we have now. You are limited to three visits in that plan. Just to speak to our, our EAP a little bit, and this has been, this was a struggle when I was at the city, managing benefits at the city. And I think it's, I think it's a struggle nationwide. There's a shortage of, of mental health providers. They're, they're booked up for weeks and weeks at a time. And then if you try and use the EAP, the EAP will give you a list of names that participate in their network. You start calling, and many times it's, there's a six-week wait for an appointment, or we're not taking new patients. So the, the, it's just not a good user experience for our employees. And I have, I have heard feedback from, I don't even, I, I don't even how many employees, that it's always the same story. That they just, you know, and you might be in, in somewhat of a crisis, and you want to talk to someone, you know, maybe within a, you know, a couple of days. You know, at the, at the most, and it's just, it's not happening. And so this would be an extra program. They've sent me a contract. I, I did ask them to give us, give us an out, you know, try this, you know, for a year. If we, if we don't have good utilization, you know, we just, within writing, we can say, you know, 90 days from now, we want to, we want to, you know, back out of our contract. So they did put that in. But again, it can be medication support for depression, anxiety. There's, you know, lifestyle and, and wellness things. This would be no cost to the employee. If the employee, as long as the employee is enrolled on our healthcare plan, they have access to this, and their family, immediate family members also have access to this, even though the family members do not have to be on our healthcare plan. So it's a capped fee for service. So no matter what the utilization is, that, you know, are, it's a flat rate.
Yeah, I'd just add, commissioners, you know, we've talked about this in terms of our other behavioral health efforts, you know, more and more community-based providers just simply aren't taking insurance. And while I would love to just be able, and I asked, went to Michelle and said, can we do a carve-out of our plan and pay more so that we can help subsidize, you know, and, and allow this benefit, because we have a lot of employees that are coming to us and saying, like, I cannot access care. It, we, it's very difficult for us to fight the national reimbursement trends from these providers like Cigna. So I, I just, we couldn't do it. So this was an option that I felt like we could give something to employees that actually is really, you know, it's like a better help. If you've seen the commercials for those types of things, it would work in that type of method. I still acknowledge it doesn't really help us locally at a level of how do we get, you know, local providers being able to be reimbursed at appropriate rates by insurance companies. But I felt like this was a decent pilot to try and see if our employees liked the access of it and the ability to kind, to use it sort of from their phone and not have to necessarily, you know, be sitting in an office and waiting for someone to see them. So.
And it's, and it's no cost to the employees. So.
But might encourage some folks to actually, you know, reach out and try to use that because they won't have to pay a deductible.
Yeah, yeah. So get, get some help that, you know, maybe otherwise they've been putting off. So. And then we would also, we would like to do another round of the roadmap for wellness that I talked about. You know, we, it's, it's, we offered it the first time around to anybody that was already participating in our wellness program, and it filled up pretty quickly, and we have a little bit of a waiting list. Again, we would target those that are already doing something and, and participating in wellness. So it's not something that's open to all employees. If they want to, to have access to, to this roadmap to wellness, they would, they would need to start participating in the wellness program. So. So yeah, we'd like to do that again. This is just a snapshot of where we're at with our deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums. Again, we're not recommending any changes to the PPO plan for that stuff. The HRA, not recommended, recommending any changes to deductibles, out-of-pocket maximums. Again, that seed money, a small increase in that seed money and no changes to employee contributions. Again, if we can. Flexible spending, medical flexible spending, we just usually follow what the IRS says we can do. We just keep up with them. So as they increase the maximum amount to put in, we usually just follow suit. They started allowing a rollover, I don't know, maybe four or five years, five, six years ago, something like that. So again, we follow suit with that. Dependent care flexible spending, IRS hasn't touched that, and I, it's been $5,000 ever since I can remember. So. And so that we do have to follow them on that. So real quick, this is the McGrath, the McGrath Benefits Study. When we did the, a couple of you weren't, weren't here when we, you know, started the McGrath stuff. They, we also had a, a small section of, of benefit stuff that they looked at. So we reviewed the information. We sent all the information to Willis Towers Watson and had them kind of look at it. And overall, our healthcare plans are market-competitive. There's, I'd say the only place that we're really maybe not as competitive are the, the contributions out of employee paychecks. We, we are a little on the higher side on that. But as far as out-of-pocket costs for, you know, families on our plan, we are kind of middle of the road. So there, there really are some that are much, that are better. There are some that are way not, not as, as strong as ours. So I, I, I feel really good, and Willis felt really good about where we were at, you know, with our plans on that. There were some other benefits in there, like paid time off and holidays, retirement contributions. I've read all of that. You know, we want to talk a little bit more about that. And one way that we want to do it is a benefit survey for staff. Since I've been here, we've not done an overall, like a, a big benefits survey. We've got Alex in our office working on building that now, and she's got the timeline built. And so we have deadlines that we want to meet. And so we're going to, we're going to build that study. We'll give it to department heads, and I'll, you know, give it to Sarah, and we'll tweak it and, you know, get it to where we want it. And then, yeah, we'll send it out to staff. And then, yeah, we'll send it out to staff and, you know, hope for some, I mean, I think, I think, I feel like staff, for the most part, are, are very in tune with our benefits. And I think, you know, our office has, has built really good relationships with staff. And so I'm really hopeful, you know, they'll contribute to this for us, so. So any benefits that, or, yeah, any updates to benefits we want to make outside of the, the healthcare plans such as, you know, paid time off, you know, holiday, stuff like that. We will present that at a later time after we get this benefit study. I'm working on a personnel policy update. It feels like I can do 10 minutes at a time reviewing things and then get pulled away. So I need to dedicate some time to get that policy done. So that policy may have some of this stuff in it as well, so. But we're still working on it. That is all I had, so I will stand for questions.
I had a couple of questions. Do you see any trends in the average age of our employees?
Yeah, we talked about, actually Christie brought that presentation. I think our average age is 45, if I remember when we met with Willis. That, that's the average age of our population. We're split 50/50, male and female. So, but our average age, I think, has gone down as people retire and, you know, we're hiring younger workers in.
It would seem to me that average age of around 45 is kind of the sweet spot between older folks choosing meds and younger folks having kids, if you will.
Yep. Because, yeah, and, you know, you talk about plan costs. I think we've got maybe a dozen people out of the sheriff's office that are going to be having babies, or their wives are having babies in the next, you know, in the next six, eight, 12 months. So, so yeah, that, that is a much younger population there with the correction. It's just, that's a young person's job. But, but yeah, once you get to that 45 and 50, that's when you start, you, you might need more meds, you need those colonoscopies, you know, you need all those preventive exams that we pay for at 100%, so.
The other question I had is with the talk on tariffs, especially with China and India are two big places that a lot of prescription drugs are made. Have your consultants brought back any concerns about that yet?
You, we, we kind of talked about that a little bit in our meeting, and there really wasn't any, anything jumping out or really any talks within the, within the industry. You know, I think the, you know, we've had, you know, we have employees that, that, that question the cost of drugs, or they question why, why they need a prior authorization for drugs. And just, you know, the way the United States handles our, 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 you know, they handle our drugs, we, we don't get, we don't get the same prices as Canada gets, you know? There's, these new drugs on the market might cost, you know, a, a plan in the United States $90,000 a year, and it will cost Canada $30,000 a year for the exact same drug, same dosing and everything. So, but there really wasn't a lot of information that they had for us regarding that, yet. That may come.
Other questions, commissioners?
All of the questions that I had prepared got answered in the rest of the presentation, so thank you.
Yeah.
Sarah, can you just remind us that, the, the fund balance that we have in this does not come, come specifically from what the employees have paid in? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So this isn't a fund balance that comes from our, our mill levy rate at all? It's all by?
No. It does come from, yeah, these are the taxes that you levy to support the employer portion of the costs. The employees' premiums are, go straight into the trust account.
Into the trust account, thank you.
And I would also note that this isn't the only benefit that comes out of this fund. When you, she said the 42% because Kpers, KPNF, Social Security.
Work comp, yeah.
Work comp, all are also expenses to this fund.
Great, thank you. All right, there's no other question?
I do, I have one more question. So on your projections, the GLP-1 costs and utilization, you are tracking to the fact that those costs are going up. And so, looking at that after 53125, do you know what that trend is going to look like moving past 53125 and into the end of the year and then possibly into 26?
Um, no, we didn't, um, I mean, we didn't talk about that specifically. Again, that, that is, that, that again is very hard. So as, as those costs go up, those rebates, the, the rebates that we get could also go up. So it's, there's just a lot of moving, there's a lot of moving parts to it. It's really hard to project that. Another, another thing that we, I, I think we'll end up looking at next plan year is our, our co-pay structure on our prescription plan. We have a flat dollar co-pay. So as the costs of these drugs go up, the cost is borne by the county because it's a flat dollar. You know, moving to a, and we have a very high out-of-pocket maximum on our prescription plan, higher than most. Not, not hardly anybody, one or two people might meet that. But moving to a percentage co-pay would really help curb those costs because, yeah, as the cost of the drug goes up, everybody pays more.
We, yeah, we talked about that a couple of years ago, and I think it's something we can revisit. It is, it can be a really burden, a burden on some employees with some chronic conditions. So it's just one of those things that we have to weigh out. I would say that I think that projection of what that trend is and the cost is built into the pharmacy benefit manager projections that are included in that.
Yeah, yeah. It's just, it's, it's hard to nail down.
Any else, commissioners? Okay, we'll take public comment on this item. If you'd like to provide public comment, we ask you to come forward. Seeing none here, anyone online, Sarah? No one online? We'll come back to the commission for further discussion or motion.
Commissioner Reed. My only comment is thank you, and I agree with Commissioner really, that, any questions I had coming in? The slides were really comprehensive, but you filled in the blanks, so thank you for the thorough overview. And I also look forward to that benefit survey. I think that, that, that will be interesting to see what the feedback is across the, the spread of benefits. Seeing nobody else ready to make a comment, I will move to approve a recommended, move to approve the recommended healthcare plan changes, employee contribution rates, and stop-loss renewal with Optum for June 1, 2025 to May 31, 2026 plan year.
Commissioner Kelly second. Who's in second, and any further discussion?
I had one other question. Do your consultants ever give you a five-year forecast of what they think costs are going to do in the next few years?
Typically, not, not as part of this regular process. However, when we talked about spending down this fund and making a plan, they did project out multiple years. They worked with Brooke, you know, getting numbers for the, for the fund balance. So, but again, it's, that, that is, it's so hard to do. But yeah, for the, for the purposes of spin-down, that, that's one reason I think we moved to the, the mill levy decrease. You know, those, those, it's, it's just, it's hard to do.
Yeah, thanks. Any other discussion or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Christie. Thank you, Brooke. All right. We move on to our final item this evening, which is a veto session update from Little Government Relations. Stuart is here. Stuart hit the button. There you go.
Stuart Little with Little Government Relations. Mallory was here two weeks ago before the wrap-up session, and I'm here to follow up on what transpired over the two-day wrap-up session that concluded last week. So this should be brief. You will have, this will mainly be follow-up on topics. They are adjourned. They will not be back until the January of next year. They did pass a budget. They did not succeed in what they went into the session to get property tax relief other than one small bill that eliminated the one and a half mills from the statewide mill levy. There was a continuation of, of a bill that will eventually get Kansas to the point of having a single tax rate. As you will recall, at the end of last year, they went down to two. There's now a plan that as revenues exceed expectations and go into the, the surplus fund, then it will buy down tax rates eventually to get a single tax rate at 4%. It'll also bring down corporate rates to that level as well. So at some point, assuming revenue is at a, at that level, that's where we're headed. There were a lot of vetoes between the time Mallory was here and the following two days. There were, I think, nearly 20 vetoes overridden. They will not be back unless there's any kind of special session, and I'll talk a bit about that at the end. One of the things that will have some impact on what's going on is that on this Friday, the consensus revenue estimating group will make revenue projections for the next 18 months, and that will be determining how the governor puts the budget together, depending on what they see. It'll also have some impact on monthly revenue, revenue collections for the next eight months. And, let's see, I will go on. Some of the things that I know we talked about the last time when we were here, Senate Bill 2228 was a contingency fee, would have prohibited local units of government from entering into any contingency fee contracts with, for, with, for services without the approval of the Attorney General, and that was vetoed by the governor. It was overridden. There was a bill that, that was 2134 that had to do with changes on, on COR and COMA. It was signed by the governor and it is, it further constricts what you can charge for COR applications. It also, excuse me, makes a change to the, the COMA process in terms of the subcommittee that is created by a governing body is now going to be subject to the Open Meetings Act. So that will be, and that doesn't even just mean if there is a majority of electeds on it, it's going to make that subject to the, to the Open Meetings Act. So that's happening as well as a part of this bill. The, another bill, 22, or 2022, this one became law without the principal issue in it ever getting hearing. There, it, what it does is it moves, it, it sets now special elections are required to take place either during the general, during the primary, or the first Tuesday after Monday in March of every year. And that includes mail-in elections, that includes school board, bonds, all those kinds. It, I will note, it does not impact mail-in elections as long as the terminal date for those come on the election day. I will say, when they had conversations about this in the conference committee, is that there were several senators who said, we don't think we should have mail ballots on revenue issues. So we're going to see an attempt to limit this mail-in ballots for school bond issues, those kinds of things. The other note that was significant, the property ta, I could go through the 25 reiterations of tax bills that were attempted, and, and none of them have passed. And, and I will mention a couple of other issues. Fast-track permitting, this streamlines the process. It began very big. You have to, you have to approve a permit within 30 days, and if you don't, it becomes a lot, and now it's narrowed down just residential. It's taken platting out, and this was a lot of work that all the local government folks did. The Municipal Whistleblower Act was signed as well. There was the bill that kind of further restricts some, still dealing with kind of the aftermath of, of some of the COVID laws restricting further local health authorities' ability to, not quarantine, but to issue orders. They can only now, again, make recommendations on public health issues. There were a variety of bills regarding public assistance, SNAP, Medicaid, those kinds of things. Bills that were, that were, the, the governor vetoed all of them, and they went, they were overridden, and so it has to do with things like Medicaid and SNAP. The, the legislature has established a couple of things. There's now, the Inspector General for Medicaid now can investigate and subpoena and criminally prosecute for SNAP benefits, the use, just as they already had for Medicaid, and so that's been expanded. It also, and probably most significantly, the state Medicaid plan, which has always been the purview of the administration to manage that plan, make changes, the legislature oversees it, appropriates the funds. Going forward, after July 1, the, any changes to Medicaid, CHIP, SNAP, those kinds of things, all will have to go through a legislative process to be approved. So, you know, the dozens and hundreds of small little items that you're going to have to do to keep up with federal policy is now going to go in front of the legislature. They did put in place a provision that the Legislative Coordinating Council, which is the leadership group, will have some say, and will be able to do that in the absence of the legislature. But that's going to be a, an interesting thing to see how that turns into. Maybe last off this list, the governor vetoed the bill that would require all ballots to be in by 7:00 PM on Election Day, and that bill, bill was overridden. So that is what's going on now. There are three, four bills, several others, waiting for the governor to act on now. One of the, is a modified, trimmed-down version of the low-income housing tax credit law that's been in effect for a few years, and the cost of that's kind of ballooning, so the House wanted to eliminate it. They negotiated agreement to continue it for four more years and put a cap on it. Changes to the calculation of the county sales tax, the, a couple of administrative issues with regard to the revenue neutral, a neutral rate, those kinds of things are still sitting there, but lots of the major issues were sent to the governor beforehand. What's going to come back? We managed to dodge restrictions, or restrictions, but opening up the ability for home-based businesses, that would mean fire code, safety, security, those kinds of things. How many people could set up a business in their backyard? How many cars on the street? Those kind of things. So that, that was delayed until next year. Star bonds have been pushed back for a year. The motor vehicle fee issue at a hearing, it is not advanced. And, and I think in a year where everybody wanted to cut taxes, it's probably seen in that universe. There's a bill regarding the Removal of Squatters Act that provides some enhanced procedures to go through. And there's a bill for city, that's specific to the city of Topeka, but it has to do with the right to inspect rental properties that receive federal funding. Last thing I would note is legislative leadership will come back in a month or so and approve interim committees, so that'll be the committees that meet over the summer and fall, and topics and those kinds of things. We are in an interesting situation now where, circle back to the revenue estimates that I mentioned earlier, the potential for the impact of tariffs on crops, on aviation industry, on those kinds of things will impact what the revenue estimates, projections are. And those likely will be downward, obviously. So that's going to have some impact, I think, on how folks are watching monthly revenue returns as we go through and continue to add more tax reductions, going through that process. Another thing that's interesting to watch, and I, in two areas in particular, in education and in social services, some of the policies that are being discussed at the federal level that have the potential to, to devolve management and administration of, should begin with, reduce funding coming from the feds, number two, devolving management down to the states have the potential to, to, in some ways, in some topics, may generate some interest in getting the legislature back together, too. For example, how do we manage significant cuts or flexibility in Medicaid services and what the state chooses to cover? Or what if, as expressed at the federal level, we're going to give states the federal dollars and we want you to do vouchers? Or we want you to do, that's part of- Or we want you to do, that's part of the conversation. Those are the kinds of things that could kick in as well and generate some engagement on what the state would like to do. So that's kind of where we are. Things that wrapped up. And we did provide a written report that has the lengthy list of things that were vetoed and overridden. Happy to answer questions.
Stuart, do you have any insight as to why the governor vetoed the line item for the O'Connell Youth Ranch?
I think there were 30 some odd vetoes in that bill. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to recall. There is an explanation in the veto. I don't recall what, what it said, but I'm, I'll, I'll make sure you get a copy of that so you can see the explanation for that.
It got overridden and passed ultimately, but I was just curious.
I think what I had, uh, read about that was, uh, more or less the concentration of resources in one part of the state without anything comparable for the same services in the rest of the state. Um, Stuart, I'm curious, can you talk a little bit more about the timeline and possibility of, so now that they've closed the session, there's still the possibility of a special session potentially, right? Or is that time really passed?
The, so the legislature is done. If they come back before the 12th of January next year, it's going to be in a special session.
I guess, can you, sorry, let me rephrase my question then. What is an instance or an action that might prompt that? And is it true that it could happen at any time between now and the end of the year?
So a special session, the governor can call a special session or two-thirds of the legislature can direct the governor to call a special session. Uh, if there is, you know, i- if we really are only pausing tariffs and they're going to come back in another 90 days, that'll hit right about at the beginning of the new fiscal year where all those kinds of things will come in. And what that might do to monthly revenue collections going for, you know, when we have a good month, we're up 100 and 100 million and, and it's rare for us to be down very much. If we start having revenue shortfalls of a hundred million or two every month, that will bring attention. And if there's any federal policy that, and I don't expect any of that maybe happening until the fall, but coming forward that would put an obligation onto this, onto the, the state, I feel very comfortable in saying that the legislature is not going to let the administration make those decisions without coming back.
Okay, thanks.
Stuart, I have a question. You had a slide in here awaiting governor's response and no veto override is possible. Do we have any sense where the governor is on these four bills?
There is, I mean, I, I don't know that I would, I could identify on its face of it as, as objectionable in some ways and, or highly controversial. The, the, the low-income housing tax credit is, is obviously a significant issue and it's been used and it's, the, there are some intricacies with how the bill was written and how the fiscal impact is a multiplier effect that I think people were not aware of. And so the, the House wanted to just get rid of it because the financial obligation that exists already for those is huge. Uh, and so this is to limit it. So, I mean, there's some room for the governor to veto this. So we have the current system in place for another year. Come back and have a, have that discussion again next year. Um, that may be the only thing that I can see on here that's particularly controversial.
Any other questions for Stuart? All right, we'll take public comment.
Thank you.
Uh, you would like to provide public comment, please come forward. Take, go take down those slides. Anyone online, Sarah? Okay, we'll close public comment. This is an information purpose item only. So thank you, Stuart, for being here and provided that update. There's no action that will be taken. With that, we will move on to, uh, come on, Patrick. Lost my agenda for a second. Two appointments. Commissioners, I'm going to be honest with you. On my drive here, I went, ooh, I need to call someone and I have not done it. So if you would be kind enough to give me one more week, I will reach out to Steve Munch about planning commission. It just totally went over my head. I apologize for that. Do we have any other appointments, commissioners?
I, I think we might mention that we have a vacancy. So I'll let Commissioner Anderson talk about that.
We do. We have a vacancy in Palmyra Township. Our treasurer has resigned. Uh, so we will begin the process of, uh, opening up that position and interviewing candidates. So if there is anyone that is interested and lives in Palmyra Township, I do welcome the opportunity to, uh, have you apply and to interview for that process. So it'll be open for the next couple of weeks. Uh, Carrie Britt, our information officer, will also put it on social media and I thank you for doing so. And if you know anyone that's interested, uh, please don't hesitate to email.
Commissioner Anderson, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So within Palmyra Township, I know some of our cities are different classes of cities. If you live within Baldwin City, do you pay taxes into Palmyra Township and would you be eligible for that role?
You do pay into taxes in Palmyra Township and about, I, I think you would be eligible to serve, but I could verify with the clerk.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Sarah. It's time for miscellaneous items and we usually start with your memo.
Thanks, commissioners. My memo is attached. Uh, many of these dates you've seen before. Uh, just a reminder on County Discovery Day coming up in two weeks. And then also, we need to get the RSVP in for the Kansas Preservation Alliance Award, um, surrounding this room. And I think I've got two commissioners, Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Willie. Did you tell me you could make that?
Tell me the date again.
Uh, May 9th at noon. Just if you could let me know within the next, I really need to get that RSVP in, like, by the end of the week. So if you plan, there's no pressure, but if you want to attend and sit in the group photo or speak, we can, you know, we want to get that RSVP in. So just let us know ASAP.
Yes, please do tell me in.
Okay, great.
And to confirm, Sarah, I told you that I.
Who did? Okay, so now I got three. Great, awesome. So we all have three commissioners. I knew, I knew I had two. This is what happens now that there's five. Um, so, uh, commissioners, uh, and then I think that's all I have for this week. Um, yep, thank you.
All right, commissioners, any other miscellaneous items?
Your chair, didn't you have one? We have a proclamation, I mean, a, um,
Oh. Update them on the disaster.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Willie. So we do have, and we'll need to sign a declaration of, uh, local disaster emergency for the fires that are taking place in Northwest Lawrence. We have that here at, um, about 12:30, I got a call from, uh, our emergency management director, Robert Brennecke, and we declared a state of emergency at that time. So, but we need to formalize it here.
And by, and that can be authorized just by the chair. That's how that works is the chair can authorize that declaration. And it helps us leverage state resources to come in and assist with the event. Which, by the way, I think we've gotten some updates from, uh, that we've been deactivated. So hopefully we're calming down.
Your chair, would you indulge me in saying thank you to some of the organizations that have been helping us out with those fires?
Please.
Uh, so we'll start with Douglas County, um, Emergency Communications, of course, that we heard from today. Douglas County Emergency Management that stood up the Resource Management countywide. Um, Douglas County Public Works that actually had, um, equipment out on those fires, helping to, uh, make some fire breaks there. Um, and at least that I know of, we had Consolidated Fire District number one, Palmyra Fire District number two, Willow Springs Fire District number three. I didn't hear Baldwin City or Udora City go en route, but they're likely sitting, um, sitting at their stations for, to, to do, um, fire protection and medical response when everybody else is on calls. We also had from Franklin County, the Northwest Consolidated Fire. Shawnee County had Shawnee Heights. Johnson County, uh, sent, um, units from Olathe Fire Department. And we had the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks. Those are just the ones I know about.
Thank you to all of those. Appreciate it. Anything else, commissioners? All right, we are adjourned.